Ready?
Ready.
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 Good evening, everybody. Would you please stand with me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Mayor McCoy?
All right. All right, folks, sorry about the delay there. I needed to find out all of the dignitaries that I'm to introduce, and I couldn't find the sheet. And it is extensive. There are several individuals in attendance this evening who have requested to make a presentation, and I will... No, that's not it. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Hi, everybody. All right. I've never done this before. I'd like to welcome and thank the many state, county, and city-elected officials and their representatives, our former mayors, our board, commission, committee members who are in the audience tonight. Please stand to be recognized when... I guess what? When their name is listed, and this is confusing.
There's a lot of people.
All right. Well, I'll list you by name, and they need to stand so we can recognize you. Representing Congresswoman Julia Brownlee's office, Field Representative Mina Musavi. Good evening, welcome. Representing Senator Henry Stern's office, Field Representative Jeremy Wolfe. Where are you, Jeremy? Oh. Well, what's your name? Nice to meet you. Representing Ventura County Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Linda Parks. Hello. Representing former mayors, Councilmember Chuck Cohen... Or Mayor Cohen. That's a fair... Yeah. Representing Canejo Recreation and Park District Board Chair Chuck Huffer. Hi, Chuck. And representing Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce Director Rick Lemo, Government Affairs and Tourism Director Adam Haverstock, and Government and Affairs Tourism Manager Dan Garcia. Hey, fellas. And then it looks like finally we have, representing the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, Association President Sean Maradian.
I'm stepping in, Robert Heatherly, tonight.
Welcome. All right, that does it. And now I move to the podium.
Mayor McCoy, before you step to the podium, what I might ask, just because we have a couple of guests in the audience, rather than make them wait till the very end, we have a special guest announcement of our new Chief of Police, and I just would wonder if you would be okay with our undersheriff speaking briefly at this point.
We have to introduce the undersheriff by name.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Monica McGrath, I'm your undersheriff with Ventura County. And before I start and introduce our new police chief, I wanted to just say, what an incredible presentation today by the city for the State of the City address. Very well done, very classy, very uplifting, inspiring, and we really appreciate your support of us as a sheriff's office and public safety. So I just wanted to say it was really nice, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And on that note, it is my honor and privilege to introduce your new Chief of Police, and it is currently Captain James or Jim Freihoff. He'll be Commander effective January 5th. He's a 29-year veteran with the Sheriff's Office. He's worked a variety of assignments: patrol, detention, special enforcement details, investigations, and crime prevention. He also was the adjutant for two sitting sheriffs, which in and of itself is a very difficult job, especially when one of those sheriffs was Jeff Dean, so I'm just saying. Very, very, very patient man. He was also, as you know, the Assistant Chief of Police here in the City of Thousand Oaks. He then went to be the Chief of Police at the City of Ojai. And now I can proudly say he has been selected with your, obviously, approval as your Chief of Police of the City of Thousand Oaks. And Jim is a very... He's a go-getter, he's energetic, and I can truly say this will be probably the smoothest transition ever, and you'll be very pleased. I know you are because you know him, and so we have that confidence in him as you do. So it's an exciting night. And of course, Jim is married to his lovely wife Tracy, with whom they have two daughters: Vanessa, age 15, and Savannah, age 13. Jeff does... Oh, Jeff, sorry. That was a slip. Jim does have a bachelor's degree from San Diego State University in 2009 in vocational education with an emphasis on adult learning theory. He also has a master's degree from University of Oklahoma in administrative leadership, and he also graduated from the FBI National Academy in 2015. Jim is also a two-time Deputy of the Year recipient, which is quite an honor. In addition to that, he's a Medal of Valor recipient in 1997. On behalf of Sheriff A. U. in County and Ventura County Sheriff's Office, it's my privilege to introduce your new Chief of Police, Commander-to-be, James Freihoff.
Before Jim speaks, thanks for letting us go off script, Mayor McCoy, briefly, but I wanted to make sure undersheriff McGrath had a chance to head home if she needed to. We couldn't be more proud and excited to have Jim come back and return to the City of Thousand Oaks. He's got big shoes to fill, and Chief Hegel, who leaves a long shadow here in all of his great work, and, you know, Chief Hegel helped groom you, as I know Chief Pentis before that, and so the legacy here is really something special. And we are so excited to have Jim come back and join our team. Jim, for those that don't know, had probably the worst commute in Ventura County, from the far edge of Simi Valley to the far edge of Ojai. And so I was just chatting with his wife and girls up there. I'm happy that they'll have some additional time with you going forward. So, soon-to-be Chief Freihoff.
Thank you very much. I am absolutely thrilled to be back here in Thousand Oaks. You talk about having a blessed career. The two jobs that I had ever wanted to have was Chief of Police in Ojai, because that was my first patrol station, and Chief of Police in Thousand Oaks. There is nobody more blessed than me, and as you know, that the Chief of Police job isn't just a 40-hour-a-week job, it is a non-stop answering-your-phone availability. And I cannot do that without the support of my wife Tracy and my girls, who I'm gone from a lot. Like the city manager here, I said, the commute won't be nearly as bad now, I'll be able to get to work and back home and back if I need to. Understanding my girls, understanding how hard that drive was, my little one, every day with her classmates, would pray for my safe travels to and from work, because it was an hour and a half each way every day. So I was very blessed to have their support, and I know they're happy to have me closer to home, and I'm thrilled to be your police chief. Thank you. Mr. Powers, you don't have to worry about being off script, because I am not following it very well. We're going to do a special presentation, and what we do at the reorganization meeting is we typically do a seat dedication, and this was a unanimous vote by the council for this seat dedication. And I'd like to read about our recipient. In 1984, the Thousand Oaks City Council initiated the annual Council Seat Dedication Program to recognize citizens who have demonstrated outstanding service to our community. This evening, the City Council is pleased to honor this year's Council Seat Dedication recipient, Carol Freeman. Carol, will you please join me at the podium? You can clap on this one. Carol Freeman is widely known as an accomplished executive, an active volunteer, and a financial supporter of many community programs in Thousand Oaks. Carol and her husband Dave have been the residents of Thousand Oaks for nearly 40 years. Carol began her career as a registered nurse in the emergency room at Los Robles Hospital in 1968. Well, they wrote it. She earned her... You preserve well.
Nice preserve.
Thank you. She earned her master's degree in business administration from COU, and later served as CEO of several hospitals in Southern California, including the Thousand Oaks Surgical Hospital. From 2006 to 2011, Carol served as a president of Senior Concerns, a vital social service organization that supports the needs of our senior community. In addition to Senior Concerns' well-known Meals on Wheels program, Carol started several new programs while she was there, such as Senior Chat, Brain Fitness, and Memory Day. The influence of Carol's professional accomplishments is overshadowed only by her decades of community service. She has served as a hands-on volunteer and as a board member for a variety of local organizations, including, and this is quite a list, hospice volunteer, board member, president of the board, and director emeritus for Hospice of the Canejo; meals-on-wheels volunteer, board member and president of the board for Senior Concerns; chair of the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging's Senior Adult Master Plan Health Team; supporter and financial donor to many mansions; member of the Canejo Valley YMCA, board member, excuse me; volunteer, foundation board member, and past president of the Rotary Club of Thousand Oaks; and board member and president of the Canejo Valley Model A Ford Club, which is dedicated to the preservation and restoration of Model A Ford. Carol and Dave have even driven their Model A truck in the Canejo Valley Day parades. In 1998, Carol was recognized for professional and philanthropic leadership when she was named Woman of the Year for the State of California's 67th Assembly District. For over 50 years, Carol has devoted herself to the health and well-being of the members of our city. We are so grateful to her for her generosity of her time, talent, and spirit. She's an inspiring example of the effect that one person can have on an entire community and a major reason that Thousand Oaks is the wonderful city that it is. And Carol, on behalf of the City Council and the staff and the residents of the City of Thousand Oaks, I hereby dedicate seat number N19. In your honor, I think it's a middle seat, I'm not sure. Yeah, there it is. Yeah, see? Great seat. And we also have this for you.
Don't sit there, Joel.
Would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to say a few words.
There you go. And say some words, please.
When something like this happens in life, it's very humbling in many ways, because when you walk through here and you see the other names on those seats, you think, well, geez, those were really important people, and I'm just a preserved... Well-preserved. Carol Freeman, that'll go down.
Be the star.
It is a blessing to live here in Thousand Oaks. I'm going to agree, Jim. I am blessed, every day. There are so many people in this city that think it's still a small town. We are a small town. When I started working in the ER at Los Robles, occasionally had to do a midnight shift. That's just what you had to do. You could go many nights in a row and never see anybody walk through that door, except for the sheriff deputies. They took care of us.
You had good coffee.
Yeah, we always had food and coffee, and facilities. Anyway, I am honored by this evening's presentation. There are so many thousand people out there in this city who deserve the same thing, but you'd have to enlarge the City Council Chamber to put more names on more seats. I will treasure this, I truly will treasure this, and I thank you.
Mayor McCoy?
Yes.
Yes. That's you. If you would remain at the podium, we do have some members of the community that would like to thank you for your service and give you some accolades, if that's okay with you? All right, very good. First up, we have, representing Congressman Julia Brownlee's office, we have Mina Musavi. Step right up to the podium.
I don't bite. You get the microphone.
So, on behalf of Congressman Brownlee's office, we wanted to present you with a certificate in recognition of your outstanding service and your distinguished leadership as mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks during a hard and trying time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mina. Thank you, Mina.
May I just add that if every presentation is that succinct, I am thrilled to be up here. Bless you.
Okay. Very good. Next up, representing Senator Henry Stern's office, we have Denise Nitter. Denise?
Sorry I called you the other name. Here you go. So, I can be Jeremy Wolfe, if that's easier. Just kidding. Okay, so again, hi, my name is Denise, I'm here on behalf of State Senator Stern and the State of California, and we're also presenting you a certificate thanking you for your service and your dedication to the community.
Thank you so much.
Very nice. All right, very nice. Next up, we have, representing the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, our very own supervisor, Linda Parks. Linda?
It's a delight to be here this evening to congratulate Mayor McCoy on a tremendous year of being mayor of the City of Thousand Oaks. We have all these whereas's for him, and I want to read one of the whereas's, if I might. Whereas Mayor McCoy has contributed greatly to the City Council and its mission to serve the people of Thousand Oaks, helping the city to be one of the most desirable cities in the nation, consoling a community of broken hearts after the borderline bar-and-grill mass shooting, were all part of his distinguished service. And you really had a lot on your plate, and you did it marvelously. Thank you so much.
Mayor Protam, if I might add, Linda Parks was remarkable during the most trying time in our city, and Supervisor Parks was everywhere, all the time. I don't know how you did it, but you were an amazing gift to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All right, Chuck Cohen, he's going to come up, representing the former mayors of the City of Thousand Oaks. I believe he's got something for you. Rob? Chuck?
Thank you, members of the council, Mayor McCoy. Could the former mayors please either come up or stand, so we can recognize you? Frank Schillo?
Introduce him, Chuck.
Larry Horner, Linda Parks, Joel Price, Bob Wilson, and I'm sure that if she could have made it this evening, it was... Judy Lazar would have been here but for the unfortunate passing of her husband. So, just a couple of words here, and we are conforming to your discipline practice. Your colleague and fellow councilmember Ed Jones began a tradition several years ago of having former city mayors come to reorganization to acknowledge the service and good works of the outgoing mayor. Here tonight, I've just introduced the mayors that are joining in affirming your job well-done for this amazing city that we all love. After listening to your State of the City address this noon, it is fair to say that you have fully measured up and have raised the bar forensically. Your presentation and thoughts today conveyed to that audience were outstanding. Thank you for a year of compassion, spirit, leadership, and emphasis on togetherness while being tested by tragic events and divisive times. Our aggregated best wishes and thanks to you and your wonderfully supportive wife and family for a great year. Thank you so much.
This is now my favorite cup. To all the men and women who have served the city in the position of mayor, I never understood what it is that you experienced until now, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your faithful service to the city over the years. It's quite an honor to be amongst your ranks, so thank you.
There you go. Thank you for your service, former mayors. And now, from the Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, we have our Director Rick Lemo, Government Affairs and Tourism Director Adam Haverstock, and Tourism Manager Dan Garcia. I know. Hello, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, council, and of course, Mayor McCoy. It is my pleasure to represent our Chamber of Commerce tonight as the longest-serving board member and only chair emeritus twice, along with two of our spectacular staff members. I thought a lot about what I wanted to say and came up with about an hour, hour and 15 minutes worth of stuff, but when I compared it to how great your noon speech was, and the fact that I've been reminded to keep it brief, I thought I would use two words that may be overused, but I think you will know from our chamber that we really mean it, and that is "thank you." Sometimes we sort of say that in passing very quickly, but we really mean it. We do need to be concerned about what's good for business in our city, and when you look at all of the healing that's taken place and everything that you help lead us through with other council members, that's good for business in this city. And so we thank you very much for all that you've done and for your service. I'm going to steal one thing from the long speech. It's always bothered me that usually you have to be at a funeral before you hear the words, "well done, good and faithful servant," and you're hoping the person hears that. But I think you should know that we think you did a great job, so well done, good and faithful servant. Thanks.
I'll add one tiny thing, and that is we are presenting you with an Eagle Award tonight. This is a traditional award we give out at the Chamber of Commerce. Eagles stand for freedom and prosperity, and that's something we strive for at the Chamber of Commerce, and so we think you've been a great advocate for us, and so this is for you. Congratulations on a great year. Thank you so much. All right, let's keep moving.
Rob, you know you've arrived when you received the Chamber Eagle. Next up?
No, 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 the coffee cup.
Oh, well. Can't forget the coffee cup. Representing the Canejo Creek and Park District Chair Chuck Huffer. And friends.
I'd refer to you as Mayor McCoy, but you're Rob to me, so, Rob, on behalf of the Board of Directors, most of whom are here this evening, and the staff, Canejo Recreation and Park District, we'd like to thank you for your past year of service to our community, your continued service and partnership with the Park District, your leadership in making sure that the city and the Park District continue to work together on such important projects as the Global Center and the Teen Center, which we just renewed a 20-year agreement to keep those facilities going, a large grant that you led the city in awarding to improve both the Global Center and the Adult Center. Most importantly, some six to seven months ago, you called a meeting with folks from throughout the city, the Park District, the city people, Sheriff's Department, and you directed this group, said, "we want to make sure that we have something in place for the one-year anniversary." At the time, most people thought it couldn't possibly be done. Thanks to your leadership, it did indeed get done, and just a few weeks ago, we dedicated the Healing Garden over at Canejo Creek North. We did want to present you with... There are 12 pieces of granite from the granite benches that we installed over at Canejo Creek North. We wanted to present these to you as thanks for your leadership in that project and everything else you've done for the city. And on a lighter note, we noticed at your lunchtime presentation, you had a nice video and several things that you had that you were doing, you noticed that you were really, really good at the disc golf. So, we wanted to make sure that... And we actually have, I think, two or three different discs in here, because what I'm told, it takes different discs for different holes and things. Anyway, we want to give you this bag and discs to continue to hone your skills as a semi-professional disc golfer now that you have a little more time. And we did want to point out, because we know you do a lot of traveling in between your duties here in the city, the nice thing about disc golf is, unlike packing along golf clubs or even tennis rackets, you can pack your discs in even the smallest carry-on luggage. And I did want to provide you with a map of disc golf courses around the country, so no matter where you are, you can bring your discs with you and play to your heart's content. So, Rob, thank you very much for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you so much. Chuck, you were gracious to say that it all began with a meeting, and that you didn't believe it could be done, but the reality of it is, I just asked for it to be done. The men and women of the CRPD and the city staff made the impossible happen. You're remarkable, and the way you blessed our city that on the one-year anniversary, not only would we have a park, but it would be the most remarkable park, the Healing Garden, that I think we could have ever have planned with a bevy of consultants. It just speaks of this quality that you have aspired to. It is... It's a culture of excellence at the CRPD, and Jim, remarkable job, and thank you. Thank you all for what you did. God bless you guys.
Beautiful gift.
That's my grandson.
All right. And we now have, representing the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, Vice President Robert Heatherly. Robert?
So, like Rick Lemo, I went to put something together for you, and it probably was about an hour, hour and a half, so... But I have some words here that came from my heart, and I think I do still want to read it and not just ad lib. My name's Robert Heatherly. I've been a resident in Thousand Oaks and Westlake Village since 1966, so I've seen a lot of changes in this town, and I'm still a young man. But, you know, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to give special thanks to Mayor Rob McCoy for his relentless and tireless commitment to his mayoral responsibilities and duties. However, Mayor McCoy's true duties and calling during his tenure was to God and the people of Thousand Oaks. During a time of need and despair that no one could have imagined, not only did Mayor McCoy step up, but he leapt up and prayed and cried and nurtured our beloved city. The world was watching, and our little town, sandwiched between Los Angeles and Santa Barbara, took care of its people and stayed strong. Thank you, Mayor Rob McCoy, for staying steadfast in your commitment to the City of Thousand Oaks, and moreover, to the people of Thousand Oaks and the entire Canejo Valley. The Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association would like to thank you, Mayor, for all of your support you've given to us over the last year as advocates... your support you've given to us over the last year as advocates for the businesses and property owners along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Many exciting proposals and future plans have been started during your tenure as mayor, and we are looking forward to working with our new mayor, Al Adams, in the coming year. There's many wonderful projects and enhancements for our beautiful city among the Oaks. And in closing, I would like to quote Mayor Rob McCoy from his speech today at the State of the City Luncheon. "Let us plant the trees today that we ourselves may not enjoy the shade." On behalf of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, I'm honored to present to you this plaque as a token of our appreciation.
Thanks so much.
Now, if you'd, thank you, Robert. If you'd remained at the podium, our city manager's gonna be there, and I'm coming down as well.
Thanks so much, Mayor Pro Tem. It's my pleasure, Mayor McCoy, to be here representing our executive team. We always have an opportunity to thank the mayor that we work so closely with every year. I think people, you alluded to it, people don't really have an appreciation for what all that is really involved when you take on this post for a year. All the obligations, all the events, and all the activities, and that's on top of producing a television show, which we set out to do in December and January, and I think did so very successfully, for anyone that saw the outtakes of that at today's luncheon. Of my years working, 20 years in public service, I've always seen this amazing thing in the cities where mayors are rotated. There's this tendency that mayors just happen to be the right mayor at the right time, and that's just happened time and time again. And I just have to say, from the administrative post that I was in, coming out of probably the most challenging leadership year I'd ever experienced, to have the calm and comfort of Mayor McCoy stepping into those shoes this year, and our ability to work so closely together and accomplish such amazing things over the course of the last year, I have to say that Mayor McCoy is absolutely the right mayor at the right time for the city of Thousand Oaks. And on behalf of all of your executive colleagues who you work very closely with, many of them are here tonight, if, executive team, if you don't mind standing up really quickly. These are the department heads that help drive the work here in this organization on a daily basis and lead our efforts. I know you and I, being a guy from the South, we have a shared appreciation for really good steak, and we chipped in to make sure that you were gonna be well-fed in the year ahead, so, thank you.
And I will follow up with that. To Rob, to my colleague, and most importantly, my friend, I want to present to you, from your fellow city council members, the traditional plaque to commemorate your one year of service.
Thank you.
All right. And we also have a beautiful, careful Al.
Lovely caramel.
Price is right. No, it's beautiful. The name spelled properly and everything. Now, Rob, we're gonna take you back up to the podium, our dais, and heap more accolades upon you. As traditional, of course, the council members have to get a few words in here about our mayor. And if it's all right with everyone, I'd like to start, and to, as I mentioned, to Rob McCoy, my friend, who you have become my friend over these years, and it's very important to me. Everybody knows you came on during some very challenging times, and you certainly rose to the occasion. You were empathetic, you were compassionate, you put people and families first, and it was so important for the city that you did that. And you end the year on a very uplifting note. And let it be known, and it's been stated here before, the memorial that we dedicated was because of Rob McCoy. It was his idea, and he made it happen, and we got it done on a one-year anniversary from the event. So, I think that deserves a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Really appreciate your commitment to the community, Rob. Appreciate the way you ran the meetings here. It's always a challenge, sometimes, to deal with the public, but you did so with respect and with dignity, and with a little bit of humor too, to get us through some longer meetings, so we certainly appreciated that. And you made the entire council look good by your demeanor. You really did. And a personal note, I have to thank you for being there on the day that my father passed. You were there for me, gave me a shoulder to lean on. I will never forget that, Rob. That meant a lot to me.
My pleasure.
It was, really helped me. Thank you. And also, you may have seen today that Rob, it was his idea to come up with T.O. Talks. It's a charming video that he's put together. So, I'd like to ask you tonight, Rob, would you be willing to continue that into the next year?
I have a face for radio, but I'd be happy to do that if you'd like.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because you've done a wonderful job, but it's a very charming way to introduce people to the city, so I'm glad to hear that.
I'd be honored.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Al.
So, why don't I start with our council member, Angler, and we'll just work our way down. Bob?
Mayor, as you know, I'm the new guy. I haven't been on council before, this is my first year. And I had my eye on you the whole year, I want you to know. I've been taking notes, and I just want to say that, for those who don't know, I don't think we ever started the meeting late. Your punctuality is amazing. I appreciate that. Secondly, though, I think your patience was something that I noted. Your patience with our public speakers, giving them the respect and time that they needed. I appreciate how you approached that. And then finally, I think your kindness is something that I really took away from this year, and I appreciate you and how you handled our public speakers, your kindness amongst our group here, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Bob.
Claudia?
Rob, Mayor McCoy, I wanted to really pay tribute tonight, but I'm under the weather, I can't talk very much. But it was important for me to be here tonight, as well as at the luncheon, because I know that when you started out as a council member, you probably did not expect to experience what you have experienced, not only among us colleagues, but also citywide, and of course, the twin tragedies that we had a year ago. I really appreciate the way you have conducted yourself over the last year as mayor and led the city through a very, very difficult year, that ended with a beautiful dedication to the borderline victims, and that was because of you. And I know that it is being mentioned numerous times, that you're the one behind the memorial. But I also want to make sure, wanted to be known, that when you started out, when we started out, November 7th, it was a difficult time, a difficult three days and beyond that. And I remember seeing you in the gymnasium with the families, how you tended to them, how you prayed with them. I was with other family members, but as they said, you were the right mayor to heal us and to unite us during the last 12 months. And although we do have our philosophical differences, which you brought up during the luncheon today, we know how to respect each other's opinions. And I do want that to be known in the community, beyond the city council, that you have got to show the proper respect to one another. Do not tear each other down, because it does you no good at all. It really, it really doesn't. And we can have different factions in town, but please don't allow those distractions and hate to take away from what really is at hand and what is important here. That is the future of our children, the future of our city. And Mayor McCoy has done a formidable job, really, to lead our city over the last year. I don't think we'll ever have a mayor like you again. And I really, really, really appreciate you and your friendship and your family, and look forward to working for many more years with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you, Claudia. Ed?
How do I follow that? Rob, I think you know how I feel. I've got a little cold too, and I don't know if I got it at lunch from, Ashley Al was, Bob was sitting between us, Claudia, so I don't, I don't think it was, you know, contagious. Rob, I think you know how I feel about you. I sent you a note. I wish I had it with me, I'd read it. I said, among other things, and with apologies to the former mayor's ear, and even Chuck Cohen with his gift of gab, one of the things I said, as you'll remember, is I've known every mayor, seriously, I've known every mayor since this city started, and I think there have been 35 of them or something, and I have never known anyone that worked as hard as you, and I have never known anyone that was as eloquent as you. You put into words the things that most of us could just feel. And when someone does that, you give to people the feeling that they're actually doing that too. You're bringing everybody together when you do that, and it's a marvelous gift you have. And I've gotta say, on a personal note, I really appreciate your letting me speak to your congregation when I was a candidate a year ago. That was very kind, very kind of you. So, I can wish you only the best, and I don't know if we'll ever see anyone that did the job when the chips were down and had to be done, that you did. So, my unended gratitude and respect to you.
Thank you. Well, I, I think it was Kyle Jory who said, "This is a love fest," in a tweet, and so be it. I have a deep love for each and every one of you, grateful for the service that you provide to this community, but more importantly, the support from the community itself. What a great privilege it is to serve such a wonderful city. And there's nothing wrong with taking time out of a busy year to stop and reflect what a great gift we've been given. And so, I want to say thank you to each of the council members who make doing this work so easy. Your words are kind, and I'll treasure them. Claudia, I know what it took for you to come down tonight, and what it meant to come today. I know what it's like not to feel well. But yes, I often say that ideological differences, that's the beauty of our community, that we endeavor to find commonality. And you are a treasure, and you are my friend. Bob, I got to know you in Kiwanis. I've seen you and Sue in your service to this community, and a lot of folks do it because they want accolades. But it is ingrained in your character. You bleed service. And the way in which you just continue to find every need in this community and put a hand forward to help, and it reflects itself in the way in which you do your work here at the council. I'll come into the office, and you'll always be here. You'll be doing office hours as a council member. You work hard, and you're a wonderful addition to this council. Councilmember Jones, Ed, I, your letter is precious, and your words mean the world to me. And I know that you do have that wisdom and that history to be able to reflect and to state those things. I don't know that I'm worthy of them, but they minister to me deeply. Your fervent, faithful service to this community over all these years, it's remarkable to me. I know I've noted before that my very first time I was elected to the council, I won by 52 votes. I don't know how it happened. You are the toughest person on the face of the earth to run against. Nobody walks precincts like Ed Jones. Nobody works harder than Ed Jones. And I'm not going to say anything about your age, because it does not reflect in the way in which you have so much abounding energy. You are an amazing human being, and I'm honored to serve with you, and what a wonderful gift you are to our community. And then, Al, yes, you are my friend, one whose friendship I deeply cherish. And I sit back and marvel, I've called you this often, that you're the Andy Griffith of the city council. You have this wonderful way about you, and you love, you love people. To start a meeting on time as the mayor is most difficult with you. Because inevitably, you're up in the chambers, up in the seats, greeting people. You have a genuine interest in their lives and what they're about, and it reflects in everything you do. You are my friend, and you are a blessing to me, and the city will be blessed to have your leadership. And so, to all of you, thank you, and that concludes the love fest. I do this often, and it's because the way in which my life has been so tremendously blessed, it's almost as though the two have become one. And none of this would have been possible, and nor could I have ever experienced the joy of serving in the city, had it not been for the person who's served and cared for me my whole life, adult life, I should say, that has been my best friend, and that's my wife, Michelle. I love you, dear. And my kids are here, too. And I love them all. All right, that's it. Love fest over. Do I have anything else to do? This isn't over yet? Oh, that's right. One last time. I'd said it earlier, the two happiest days of your life is when you buy the boat and you sell it. And the new punchline is, the two happiest days of your life is when you become mayor and you're no longer mayor. I've got about 40 seconds left. Madam Clerk, will you please announce public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Five individuals have presented cards in pursuit to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The display turns yellow when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you so much. Our first speaker tonight will be Don Lanson, the finest planning commissioner on the face of the earth.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Mayor McCoy. My name's Don Lanson, resident of Thousand Oaks, and vice chair of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission, appointed by Mayor McCoy. We all know that Mayor McCoy is a big fan of history, and specifically historical quotes. So, I was trying to find a quote that actually would perfectly indicate exactly all the things that Mayor McCoy has gone through for the year, and it was difficult, trying to find the perfect thing. And ultimately, one quote stood out for me above all else, and it was from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." The past year, Mayor McCoy has dealt with some of the most impactful things that have happened to our city since its inception, from fires and shootings... happened to our city since its inception, from fires and shootings to immigration and wireless technology, to cannabis and homelessness, and everything in between, the amount of controversies and challenges have been overwhelming. And through it all, Mayor McCoy has actually stood firm while maintaining just amazing compassion and grace and civility and sense of community. I've seen him at so many events, I'm going off script because that fits. Just to see him at all these events and his ability to connect with everybody and anybody is just absolutely amazing. You've done so much for our city. Thank you so much for being our mayor, and thank you so much for allowing me to actually serve the city on the planning commission.
Thank you, Don. Our next speaker will be Angela Nardone, followed by Matthew Globke? I hope I said it right. Hello.
Hi there. Mayor McCoy, I wanted to thank you so much for all your support in this last year. As some of you know, we have a Persian New Year that occurs, or has occurred every year for the last 20 years in the Kinnon Valley, and I think one of the largest gatherings was probably about 8,000 or 10,000 people gathering here for Persian New Year. And as many of you know, there are Persian Muslims, Persian Jews, Persian Christians. It's really a, a national holiday, not a religious holiday. And it's the beginning of spring, and there were some changes where, kind of 90 days before the holiday, we didn't have a, a real venue where we could do an actual event. And I had met Rob McCoy at an event in the community, and it was funny, we ended up just sitting next to each other, and I had known the name, not the face. And so he just, you know, looked over to me and introduced himself and, and was just as gracious as anyone could be. And, you know, we ended up exchanging contact information, and when all this occurred, I reached out to him and said, you know, "Can you help us? I mean, can you, is there anything that could be done?" Mayor McCoy just did everything he could and really helped allow our event to happen this year. Thousands of people were able to celebrate, and I think that just goes to show you how much he cared. And just one simple event where I met him and we exchanged contact information, the fact that he was at an event, and reaching out to people and, you know, shaking hands with a stranger, ended up being a friend to, to us and helping a really special event happen that wouldn't have otherwise happened. So I just really want to thank you for your support and that, that one day you reached out to me and, and we became friends, and I appreciate that so much. And I just feel like that's emblematic of your character, and we thank you on behalf of the Persian community for all your support.
Thank you so much. Matthew, you're up, and then you're going to be followed by Angie Simpson. Will you help me with the pronunciation of your last name?
Globke.
Globke, okay. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Matthew Globke, and I'm the chair of the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission. And on behalf of the Youth Commission, we'd like to thank you, Mayor McCoy, for your dedication and commitment to our community. And to incoming Mayor Adam, we'd like to say that we wish you good luck in your upcoming term, and we look forward to working with you and the rest of council in the future. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. I am Angie Simpson, and I'm here as your friend, as somebody who's watched you grow as a leader over the past five years that you've been in the public spotlight as a civic leader, not necessarily in your day job. But I just wanted to say thank you for many different things. First and foremost is just that you've, you've role modeled, you've modeled such great candor with people of different philosophies. And I really have appreciated and learned how you're capable and you've executed in building bridges, and how we went from, you know, a relationship where we did not know each other at all, and I was actively campaigning against you two times, to you accepting me, having a meeting with me, us sitting down and talking, and then being where we are today, three years later, a relationship that is, has really grown, where I totally look up to you. I think of you as a mentor, as a friend, and I'm just really grateful for your service and, and thank you for all that you've done, for not just me as an individual, but for my family and for our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Bless you, dear. Chase Rashid.
Oh, boy. Look at those pants.
Chase, you win the award for the coolest pants.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I had to get up here and talk about the mayor because he's not just the mayor or city councilman to me, he's my friend. When I was running the same race as him in the special election, he almost immediately reached out to me. One of the kindest things he did is he gave me a ink pen. I believe it was from the Ronald Reagan Library, or it had a Ronald Reagan quote on it. And that's not someone that I'm really on the same ideological wavelength as, but I still appreciate that gesture because for him to reach out to me and we're on, you know, totally different wavelengths was just amazing to me. And I was treated with respect by everybody in that race, and Mr. Jones was one of the people. But Mr. McCoy became my friend, and he, he led this city magnificently through this tragedy that we had. And I wasn't surprised that he did that because when it's my birthday, he'll call me because when we were in a, one of the debates we did for the city council, it was on my birthday, and I said that, so he remembered that, and he'll call me. When I had to go to Cedars to find out why I was having seizures, he talked with me before I went, and that really helped me. So I was not surprised that he was able to lead us through that because, you know, a lot of politicians, they have a, they have a political hat and they have a, you know, their personal hat, their person, their own personality hat. He doesn't have that. He is the same person he is all the time. If he's your friend, he's the same person. If he's the mayor or the councilman, he's the same person. So I really want to thank you for that, and my mom wanted to thank you for helping get the charity karaoke recognized, but thank you, and I hope you remain on the council as long as you can stand it. I know it's hard being in political office, so thank you.
Chase, thank you, friend. And then our final public speaker will be Tom Hunt.
There goes a minute of my time right there. That's what happens when you get old. Eighteen years ago, I went to a church, and I met a pastor, and we became instant friends. And I knew at the time that we were going to do something different. I just had that feeling, I had it all along. And when the time came that he decided to get into the political realm, I stood behind him 100%, and I'm still behind him. You never let me down, Rob. You never let this city down. This is my 50th year in Thousand Oaks, and I love this city, and I can remember almost all of you mayors. And you all were so dedicated to this city, that's why it is what it is today. And this whole council, I think, deserves a huge applause because they're very dedicated people, and I really appreciate each one of them.
Thank you, Tom.
We got lots to do in this city, and I see a lot of people here tonight, and I just beg you to get active, pay attention to what's going on in this city, come to the meetings. And if you can't come to the meetings, look at them on television. But you need to know what's going on in the city, and they need it. They need our support. So please, support them, and, but most of all, vote, and vote for Rob McCoy when he runs for the election.
Well, that concludes our public comments. Thank you, each and every one of you, for your kind words. I would add that I had no aspirations to run for office, and it was Tom Hunt who had just had a stroke and couldn't speak. He could speak a little bit, but hard to understand. Face was paralyzed. He said, "I want you to run for office, and if you do, I'll make phone calls for you." And I thought, "I don't know how you're going to do that." He said, "If God heals me, I'll make calls for you." And you can see that he, he's a good speaker. He's funny, too. And I think he's made 20,000 phone calls for me. And this is your fault. So thank you, everybody, for your kindness. We will now proceed to item number seven, council reorganization, and I think we're So now's the time for the council reorganization. Will the deputy clerk please announce open nominations?
Nominations are now in order and open for the office of mayor for the city of Thousand Oaks. Are there any nominations?
Bob Angler, Councilmember Angler.
I would like to nominate our esteemed colleague, Al Adams.
Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
Yes. So Mayor Pro Tem Adam has been nominated. There being no further nominations for mayor, nominations are declared closed. Mayor Pro Tem Adam has been nominated to serve as mayor until December 2020. I will conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Okay. No, yes, yes.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Angler?
Yes.
Mayor McCoy?
Wholeheartedly, yes.
Okay, Rob. You're free. Free at last. All righty. And now I am going to open the nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. If you would announce it, please, Laura.
Yes. Nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem are now open. Are there any nominations?
And Bob Angler is up on that.
Yes, again, I'd like to nominate our other esteemed colleague here, Claudia Bill de la Peña.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña has been nominated. Are there any others?
Seeing no other nominations, I will close the nomination process and we'll take it to a vote.
Yes. So Councilmember Bill de la Peña has been nominated to serve as Mayor Pro Tem until December 2020. I will conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Angler?
Yes.
And Councilmember McCoy?
Wholehearted, yes.
That motion passes 5-0.
Well, I do believe it's traditional for the incoming mayor to make a few remarks, and it is really an honor and a privilege to serve as the mayor of Thousand Oaks. Thank you, my fellow council members. I appreciate that very much. Yeah, I have to share just a quick story with you. My daughters came home over the Thanksgiving weekend. They're 21-year-olds, seniors at UCSB, and it was great to see them, of course, Allison and Erica, my wife Marilyn's in the audience. And the nice thing is they were able to bring friends over to our house that they had made from years ago, from Westlake Elementary School, from Kalina Middle School to Westlake High School. So I have a house full of young ladies that hadn't seen each other. It was just great to have them all together. And I, I said to one of the girls, I said, "So how are you doing?" And she said, "I'm great." She said, "But I'll tell you, Mr. Adam, it's good to be home in Thousand Oaks. Good to be home in Thousand Oaks." And I thought that really sums up this city. I really do. And we have 129,000 people that live here in this city, and it's, it's the desire of this council that everyone is able to say that. It's good to be home here in Thousand Oaks. And I hope these young kids can say that 10 years from now as well, because it's up to us, it's our duty, it's our responsibility to pave the way for the next generation. And I really feel strongly about this, and Mayor, Councilmember McCoy mentioned that in his, his beautiful speech today as well. The next generation is coming, and we've got to make this city open to them. And, and we're doing that. We're doing that. We're, we're working on high-paying jobs with our biotech hub. We're creating gathering spots like Tarantula Hill, like the beautiful campus master plan that we have in store that I'm working with Councilmember Bill de la Peña on. And we are, we are, we are creating housing as well. We just, we just approved a beautiful apartment complex right across the street, right across the freeway from Amgen, that's not only going to provide entry-level housing, but it's going to provide, to preserve Timber School as well. So we get two benefits from that. And these gathering spots are so important. You know, it's a place for people to connect with, with people, it's a place for people to reconnect with people, and it's just a place where you get to see the best of Thousand Oaks, which is the people. And I'm, I'm so happy that we're on this, on this path. You know, you hear a lot about protecting the quality of life here in Thousand Oaks, and that is certainly important, and that is a big priority of this council. I just want to be sure that the quality of life is available to all the residents of Thousand Oaks, not just a few, to everybody has that opportunity, especially the younger generation that's coming up. And, and this council's prepared to do that. I think we all feel that way. And, you know, with public safety and with fiscal conservatism and protection of our environment as our top priorities, we're, we're going to get that done. We're going to get that done. And I tell you, we have the best city workforce in the entire county, if not the entire state, and it's led by our city manager, Drew Powers. These folks are wonderful. I really, it's give them a hand. We really couldn't do it without them. We, we come up with the vision, hopefully, and they, they execute it, they bring it to life, and that's, that's all we can ask, and they're doing a marvelous job. So as we found out over the last year, Thousand Oaks is a caring community. It's a, and it's a community that people aspire to live in. People want to live in this city, and, and we want to welcome people to live in this city. It's a great place for families to thrive. It's a, it's a place that we, that we all love, and we're going to continue to move forward in this city. We're going to continue to innovate, and we're going to continue to make this a very enviable place to live and to work. And for all the future generations that are coming, I hope they'll always be able to say, "It's good to be home here in Thousand Oaks." So thank you, and thank you for this honor, my fellow council members. I really appreciate it. And I believe we all might have a few words to say. Why don't we start out with our new Mayor Pro Tem, my good friend, Councilmember Bill de la Peña? Would you like to? And, and by the way, I'm very excited that you are the Mayor Pro Tem. I can't, we're, Claudia and I are working on the campus master plan together, and in my opinion, and I think Claudia shares it, this is the single most important committee that has occurred in this city since this building was built. And I'm very happy that you and I are working on it together, and I'm happy that you're Mayor Pro Tem because you're a solid, experienced person, and I'm glad you're with me. And now you may speak.
Thank you, Mayor Adam. Congratulations. And I believe this is your second time?
Yes, it is. My second go-round, yes.
Yes, so we'll make sure it's going to be a wild ride.
Yes.
And a lot of fun.
Thank you, Claudia. Appreciate that.
And I also look forward to helping shape the future of the city of Thousand Oaks with the help not only of the campus master plan, but the general plan update, it's super, super important. And I also want to thank Tracy Noonan, our city attorney, for your leadership and guidance in keeping the city out of trouble and helping us settle crucial lawsuits, for example, the most recent one with SCE, which will net the city of Thousand Oaks several million dollars, which will be put to great use. That, that was, that was a major accomplishment. That said, I am delighted to be surrounded by wonderful council people who are also my friends, I consider them my friends, and by the excellent city staff who will help make us the right, make right, the right decision. And really, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Ed?
Al, congratulations. It's a pleasure to have you been my seatmate here, having, you know, come back after a long time to get me on the ball here. long time to get me on the ball here and teach me the rules again. So it's really been great. And Claudia, best wishes as Mayor Pro Tem. It's going to be a pleasure to work with you, and anything I can do to be of help, let me know.
Thank you, Ed. Rob?
City's in good hands, the wisest and most experienced, both in the position of mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, so light it up. Bless you guys.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes, Mayor, in a room full of former mayors, you've now joined the ranks again, and we're looking forward to a great year with you as our leader. We had a lot of things started in the last year or two, and I'm really looking forward to working with you to help bring some of those into, into reality. And as a team up here, I think we can, we can make some things happen, and looking forward to serving with you.
So am I, Bob. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you've got a good, solid council here. We all get along, we work well together. We may not agree on everything, but that, that doesn't matter. The fact is that we respect each other, and we want to move the city forward, and I couldn't be more happy to work with a greater, greater bunch of people than my friends on this council. So with that, we have a reception down in the lobby. We have some desserts and the like. I look forward to chatting with everyone down there. Thank you all for coming so much. It's been a great evening, and we appreciate you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.